Let's call this meeting of the Berkeley Fuel Planning Commission to order. This will be a virtual meeting as allowed by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31st, 2025. As you found out, we're recording this meeting. Anyone else can record the meeting after notifying the chairman. Is anyone else recording? Okay, then we will begin with a roll call. Kate, could you please do that?
Yep, so we do the roll call from alphabetical by municipality, by towns and cities. So we start with Adams, we end with Windsor. When I call the name of the town, if the delegate would speak first, your first and last name, and then if the alternate is with us, the alternate would be second. So Adams.
John Duval, alternate.
Great. Offerd. Beckett. Cheshire.
Peter Traub, delegate.
Clarksburg. Dalton.
Caleb Darby, delegate.
Egremont.
Barry McGurn, delegate.
Florida. Great Barrington.
Pedro Pachano, delegate.
Malcolm Fickel.
Hancock. Hinsdale. Glensboro.
Ian Yinger, delegate.
Lee.
Okdonovan, delegate.
Lennox. Monterey. Thought I saw Laura. Did we lose her? Monterey. Right. Mount Washington. New Ashford.
Keith Torrico, delegate.
Sorry, Keith, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
Thanks. New Ashford. New Marlborough. North Adams. Otis.
Mark Anthony, delegate.
Peru. Pittsfield. Richmond. Sandisfield. Savoy. Sheffield.
Renee Wood, alternate.
Stockbridge.
Justy Moorehouse, must an alternate.
Tearingham.
Amanda Hamilton, delegate.
We heard from the Washington delegate and alternate that they were both out of town, unavailable. West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Corey Campbell, delegate.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Windsor.
Doug McNally, delegate.
Christopher Casali, alternate.
Great, thank you for your patience. When I do the roll calls, I'm going to just call, I'm just going to just call names when we get to the actions.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
The next order of business is to vote to approve the minutes of July 20th, 2023, full commission meeting. Do I have an emotion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Buck.
I'll second Pedro, Great Barrington.
Thank you, Pedro. Are there any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, let's proceed to a roll call vote for the approval of the minutes.
I'm going to call last names. Duval.
Epstein.
Traub.
Hi.
Darby. McGurn.
Yes.
Pachano.
Epstein.
Yinger.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Torrico.
Epstein.
Anthony.
Epstein.
Wood.
Yes.
Chris Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Epstein.
And McNally.
Approve. Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, the minutes are approved. Thank you, Kate. Next order of business is comments from and discussion with VRPC delegates and alternate issues. Do any of the delegates or alternates wish to have the floor at this point?
This is Doug from Windsor. I just wanted to raise the issue of the cannabis commissions, new regulations, and make sure that all of the towns are aware of the fact that the rules of the game, the rules of engagement have been radically changed to favor the industry and to really make it difficult for towns to deal with the cannabis industry. And if there is a, the MMA had a webinar that is on their website, if people want to get it with KP Law, to explain the debacle that is happening. I would really advise members of the planning boards of towns to go and see that because the recommendation is that you really reexamine any bylaws regarding cannabis because there is up to $50,000 penalty if you're out of compliance in your bylaws and with your home host community agreements. And if you're not aware of the new regulations, basically virtually all host community agreements in existence are out of compliance.
Thank you, Doug, that's good information. Anyone else? Thank you for that, Doug. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Is there anyone here who is not a delegate or an alternate who would like to make a comment at this time? If you'd like to, please just raise your hand. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is the presentation of executive committee actions. Those are summarized in the meeting materials. Tom, do you see any need to highlight any, or should we just entertain questions?
I think most, many of these are relatively routine. Some of it is administrative items that we have to do at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then a number of different grant applications. And then, I really, so I think, and a couple of policy items. We did approve what's called a written information security policy plan, which has to do with personal, how we handle personal information. That was a new policy, but that was something required whenever we, we have one program that does provide funding, and we had to have that policy in place in order to kind of participate in that program. So that was the only thing that's really a little bit unusual there.
Thank you. If anyone has any questions about any of the items in the meeting materials about executive committee actions? Hearing none, go on to the next business. I'm sorry, was, somebody have something to say? Okay, I'm sorry. The next order of business would be presentation on the amendments of housing regulations that were adopted earlier this year. Tom, would you like to introduce that?
Yeah, let me introduce it. So, you know, VRPC has a public health program, or one of the few, but I guess growing number of regional planning agencies across the state that does have such a program. And earlier this year, there were amendments to the housing regulations, and, you know, we've been talking about this at the executive committees, that maybe this is something that would be important to get a briefing on, especially since housing is such an important topic, and it's a, you know, very current topic. And so what I've done is I've asked Sandra Martin, who's a senior public health planner, to lead off, I guess. I don't know Sandra. We have other guests as well. And so we have Scott Cosella, who's with the Department of Public Health. I'm not sure yet of your title, Scott, if you wanted to introduce yourself, that would be great.
Yep, so I'm what they call an environmental analyst. I'm also the, one of the department's housing specialists.
And we also have Catherine Daigle from the Department of Public Health. If you could introduce yourself, Catherine, that would be great.
Sure, thank you. Hi, everyone, nice to meet you all. So my name is Catherine Daigle. I'm also an analyst with the program, and I am the senior housing, senior housing specialist trainer. So I really focus on the housing code as well.
And I don't believe there's anyone else from DPH, is there? No.
Just the two of us tonight.
Okay, so we have a lot of really high level expertise about public health, about housing here today. So if you've got any questions, now's the time to raise them. So Sandra, are you going to lead off? Is that it?
Yes. So. We've already introduced our, a guest from DPH, and my objective tonight is to define public health for those who may not have a full scope of what public health is, explain the basic responsibilities of the Board of Health and how that intersects with the new housing code. So the Board of Health gets authority directly from the state. It has concurrent powers with both the Department of Public Health and the Department of Environmental Protection. This is a power directly from the state, it doesn't go through the town unless there are local bylaws to that effect. Mass General Laws, Chapter 111 is the basic bible for public health authority, and it has all kinds of duties and powers delegated to the Board of Health in the Mass General Law. And then the Code of Regulations, Massachusetts Code of Regulations, the CMRs, have the same force of law as the Mass General Laws. They're just promulgated by the various agencies instead of the legislators, and they're numbered by agencies. So if you have a 105 CMR code, that means it's from the Department of Public Health, and a 310 code means it's from the Department of Environmental Protection. The State Sanitary Code is the basis for most of the public health regulations that Boards of Health deal with every day. And they have the primary enforcement authority, although the state can step in if the local Board of Health fails to act in a timely manner. And none of these regulations apply to the federal or state facilities unless it's specifically exempted by statute. The Sanitary Code, Chapter 2, is the housing code, and this is the new housing code we're going to talk about tonight, which was finalized, it became active May 2023. The Boards of Health have lots of responsibilities. Housing is one of literally dozens of local responsibilities. Nuisances and complaints are something that the Boards of Health deal with, and housing is one of the most common complaints that towns, Boards of Health get. But here are some various MGLs that have to do with various nuisances, and they basically are situations in the opinion of the Board of Health that's injurious to the public health. So they are things like noise, dust, pests, contamination, trash, mold, you name it. Beavers even are on that list of public health nuisances that are regulated by the local Board of Health. So the nuisance complaints, the nuisance law requires the Board of Health to examine all nuisances, sources of filth, and causes of sickness. And in most communities, this is a housing, it's a housing complaint. These things are usually related to housing, they're not always, but usually. And the Board of Health is required to remove, prevent, or destroy the nuisance or cause of sickness. And they do this by orders, condemnations.
When you're speaking, Madison, this is.
Question? All right, okay. They do this by orders, condemnations, and they can lean the property owner if there are any costs incurred. So I'm about to talk now about the housing situation. And housing is basically any place where people live or sleep. It includes single-family, multifamily, trailers, tents, rental, owner-occupied, rooming houses, dormitories, hotels, motels, temporary housing, alternative housing, any place where people live or sleep. Housing is regulated by lots of codes, not just the housing code. You have local laws and regulations, like your zoning codes and your local bylaws, and those are usually enforced by a local zoning officer. The local Board of Health can also pass local regulations. And you have state and federal environmental codes that have to be adhered to, and conservation commissions, Boards of Health, and the State Department of DEP primarily enforce those environmental codes. Then you have the State Building Code, which is an enforcement by the local building inspector. That code is primarily looking at the safety of a building, its structure, and its components for safety. The State Housing Code, which the Board of Health enforces, is primarily looking at how a building, housing is maintained, not exclusively, but that is a primary thing of it. And state fire regulations, and you have state and federal laws around discrimination and ADA accessibility. So you have multiple codes that regulate housing, and the housing code by the Board of Health is just one of those. So Departments of Public Health Housing Code, Chapter 2 of the State Sanitary Code sets minimum standards. Local towns can set higher standards than that, they just can't set lower standards. And safe housing is the purpose of this code, to make sure that the public health and safety and well-being of occupants and the general public. For example, the house in some extent has to be saved because of visitors to it, or first responders going into a building that's not safe. So there's not, it's not just the occupants we're worried about, we're also concerned about people who have to go into the building for various things. And Boards of Health inspectors should have a Massachusetts Public Health Inspector training in housing in order to understand this code, which is pretty complex. There are exemptions to the housing code, and some of these, these exemptions have been in the old housing code as well, some are new, or they're stated differently. So if a type of housing is regulated in a different code, a different section of the code, for example, campgrounds for children, there's a special code for that, so that regulates that area, although they overlap. Family campgrounds have a different code. So those are examples of two codes that don't exactly follow the housing code, but they overlap many of the standards. And there's always the nuisance code. So in fact, if a, if a facility is creating a public health nuisance, there's always that for a Board of Health to fall back, fall back on besides a code. So one of the things, they used to call it a civil defense, I think it was, an exemption was a civil defense shelter, now it's a temporary overnight shelter is exempt from the housing code. So emergency shelters of various kinds. Anything owned by the Commonwealth, such as parks or migrant shelters. The migrant shelters are kind of a new one that's coming along, that we're getting a large influx of migrants into the state now. And the Department of Public Health and other agencies of the state are managing those migrant shelters. So they, in effect, are exempt from the housing code. Any hospital, or nursing home, or rest home that's licensed under a different MGL, they're exempt. And of course, the federal places, like bases and stuff, are also exempt. And these are some of the housing code definitions, there are pages of them, but these are germane to what we're talking about tonight. So residence is designed, any building or structure used or intended for human habitation, as I said before, any place people live or sleep. Alternative housing is new in this code, and this one caused a lot of excitement because it allowed the Board of Health to give variances to, as long as it didn't create a public health problem or nuisance, the Board of Health could make some variances to allow different standards for alternative housing. But these have to be single-family, and they have to be owner-occupied. So whether it's a mobile or a permanent fixture, there are some abilities, it's not, the Board of Health doesn't have to do this, but they may. And then there's also a definition for temporary emergency shelters in churches, for example, that now allow the Board of Health a lot of leeway in, in those temporary emergency shelters in churches do not have to meet all the housing code requirements. And then they've added, under temporary housing, used to be it was 30 days or less, you could pitch your tent, and the Board of Health didn't really chase you if you weren't causing a public health nuisance. And now that could be up to 90 days, so under the new housing code. And this, this is, these places are, how to enforce these are new territory for the Boards of Health, and we're basically still learning exactly what this means. So these changes are in the housing code, the temporary housing up to 90 days, instead of just the 30 days. Remember, you can't legally rent substandard housing ever in Massachusetts. Alternative housing, you get these variances. Unfortunately, the alternative houses don't probably have to meet the zoning code, because our code does not cover zoning. They have to meet the building code, because our code does not cover the building code. The Title V Septic System Code, they're probably still have to meet that, and they still have to provide potable water. And these are issues if there's no public sewer or public water available to alternative housing. So there are still barriers to these, but at least they're now in the code to be considered. The Board of Health now also has the ability to change the heating system as we have warmer falls, and warmer summers, and springs. There used to be very prescribed what the heating season is, now the Board can, Health can alter that, heating season requirement based on local conditions. These new exemptions for churches that we talked about. Chronic dampness has now become excessive moisture, it's pretty much the same thing. Mold is not still mentioned, although it is something we're always looking for in a housing inspection. But you don't get mold unless you have excessive moisture or chronic dampness. Pests, now landlords must do a pre-pest inspection for insects, wildlife, whatever. Used to be that they just had to say the building was not, was pest-free, now they actually have to do an inspection. Kitchens have to have a refrigerator freezer unless the lease specifically says the tenant is supplying that, because all housing has to have refrigeration. And if you have a walk-in closet, it now needs lighting. So these are some of the changes in the housing code. It's been rearranged a lot, but most of it is the same as it's been. We, the Boards of Health, enforce the housing code. We get a complaint, we do inspections, we order them to correct, correct the situation, if they don't, we condemn it. The towns have the ability to go, to put the property into receivership through the AG's office, and that, to get a property cleaned up, and then the property is sold to pay off those expenses. And I talked before about the town can also lean the property to pay for any cleanup expenses that they have. So the Board of Health has a lot of discretion in its work. It can decide not to apply the codes to temporary structures, such as tents occupied less than 30 days that don't endanger the public health. It can decide to allow temporary housing for 90 days, and maybe even allow the 90 days to be renewed for another 90 days. It could permit alternative housing. There's a, a lot of details that are required to get a permit for alternative housing, but they can, they can do it, they can consider it, and they can change the heating season dates. So these are all discretionary acts under the housing code, the way I understand it, and DPH might correct me on any of this. So this is their contact information, which will be in these slides, that'll be available after we're done today. And, and you can always get ahold of the public health program through the, through Tom. And stop sharing, and answer questions, get corrections from my DPA colleagues if appropriate.
Well, I guess I have a question to lead it off, is that, what was the, I'm intrigued about the alternative housing. And what was the impetus for allowing that? And what would be an example of an alternative house? And has it been applied? And have towns been doing it? I know the code is relatively new, but, and, and I'm interested in this from, you know, the supply side. Is this a way to get more housing supplied, which is a problem across the state?
So, so Tom, really what you said, the shortage of housing, that's kind of what really pushed this? And the fact that things like tiny homes have become so popular, our code for years just eliminated those. So they decided that people can live in them, you know, in a safe and sanitary manner. We don't want to see these things popping up as rentals, because that just goes against the whole housing code and just going to lead to problems. But what they did is because this, the subject is so broad, the code allows Boards of Health to go and now approve alternative housing. And, but it gives the, the local health departments, Board of Health, the ability to set their own rules and parameters on what they're going to allow. So, you know, you're going to want to see what the electrical system is, how you do your sewage disposal, where these can be placed, you know, how you're going to get utilities to them, things like that.
But they would still need to meet all the other codes, the building code and, or not?
I believe that the building code is, is changed to allow these also, because we worked with all the different agencies, like the building, plumbing, electrical, state departments, to come up with this code to try to go in and limit or eliminate any to try to go in and limit or eliminate any um um conflicts with with them.
Thanks. I think I see Renee has her hand up.
Of course. She always has her hand up.
Let's start with Renee.
Uh I wanted to follow up on Tom's question because this is the most intriguing part that I've read of the new housing code, the idea of being able to do tiny homes, which to many people have a definition of less than four hundred square feet. Um how how is the a DPH um coordinating with um the building code and the electric code, electrical code and all of the other different codes that come into housing to give municipalities a kind of a preview of what's possible without having to make the Board of Health run this all down themselves? Is there a central repository where all of these changes are being accumulated? So go and say, okay, with with quote this alternative housing, this is how it's defined. This would be the separate requirements, which I've understood can can include composting toilets. This can be the potable water. Is that anywhere out there? Thank you.
So in the the housing code, it lays out very uh specifically how the Board of Health, what the Board of Health should consider. And um we have a created a job aid for our Berkshire Boards of Health to basically help them put together the application that would cover all those things. But I think the 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 short answer is that you have to actually get the building inspector to sign off on this and the zoning officer to sign off on this as well. It's not, those things are not something the Board of Health can can talk can do.
Sandra's correct and we would just really, you know, recommend that you guys just go with that collaborative approach to really make sure that everyone in town is involved because it does bring in so many different aspects.
If I could just follow up on that, we seem to do this on a regular basis where um and and the Board of Health is just the board that is presenting tonight. A board makes a change, there's changes that ripple down through various departments at the state which impact what a municipality would do if it were to look at alternative housing. And what I guess I'm just suggesting is it would be wonderful if there would be more coordination at the state level when something as remarkable as this concept of now you can do alternative housing comes out, that it's not segmented in so many different ways that in municipal, you know, an elected official like a selectman has to now, if they're evaluating uh affordable housing, gather all of these pieces in each of three hundred and fifty-one municipalities when they could all potentially be brought together at the state level. Um Lieutenant Governor is going to be in the Berkshires and uh next week, I will bring this to her attention. So I really appreciate your comments this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, and and Renee, um just so you know, this um this code has been in the work for, I don't know, twenty-something years. Um in leading up to any kind of promulgation, um there were dozens and dozens of uh meetings with um the building inspectors and electrical and the plumbing, plumbing, state plumbing inspectors to try to craft something so that we didn't have um conflicts. And and therefore, you know, one, you know, the health department passes one thing, but then, you know, they go against it's going against what the building um department enforces. So they've worked very hard and very carefully to um eliminate those conflicts. But like what Catherine said, um an application comes in for one of these or you guys are thinking about drafting your own uh regulations. Um it's pretty much very, very important that you get all the different departments um together and discuss this and and come up with um um your own local regulations and and rules that um are consistent across the across the board.
And it is a new idea, you know, that is being thought about now. And it's just a reminder to everyone, just the fact that it's up to these property owners to bring the burden of proof to the Board of Health members and to really, you know, show you guys what they're going to do, how they're going to do it and how they're going to do their best to, you know, they're not necessarily meeting the code, but in the spirit of the code to do all of the things that they can do. So just again, the fact that the burden of proof really comes from them and just it's whatever, you know, the board ends up feeling comfortable with or not comfortable with.
I I know these are reg- uh relatively new regulations, but is there any guidance for municipalities like to do this coordination? You know, in terms of who goes first or, you know, what what is some of the first steps? If 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 let's just say a the property owner did want to pursue an alternative house, is there any guidance on how they'd go about doing that?
Yeah, that that's all all in the work, Tom, works, Tom. Um I Catherine, we probably have dozens of um uh documents, right, that we're we're getting finalized, uh guidance documents that we're going to put on our website. Um the community sanitation website that'll be a value available to you. Um and I'm sure that uh alternative housing um will will be one of those.
Yeah, I think that's going to be very useful. That's great.
Yeah.
And then when um when the situation does arise, you can always reach out to us for questions. And, you know, we might not have the answers right away, but we're more than happy to find those answers for you.
Roger, you have a question, comment?
Thank you. Uh I I may have missed this, I'm sorry if I did. Uh uh is this all the result of new legislation? Or is it the result of new regulations under some very general enabling legislation that's been in effect for many years?
This is, this is the regulation, the Chapter Two of the Sanitary Code. It covers housing for the Boards of Health Enforcement part, not for the building code, not for the other codes that we talked about. Um and so this code has been in existence for a really long time uh under Mass General law. So it's a regulation put out by Department of Public Health.
Uh the reason I ask is I was wondering if there's some legislative history, which apparently now that there is not, that would say be of help. For example, if there are court proceedings, which there may well be in certain situations with very aggressive owners of properties that they would like declared to be alternative housing. I was just wondering if there was some kind of legislative history which might be useful, but apparently there is not, uh unless there is some kind of uh regulatory history where, you know, things are written down so that uh lawyers, for example, would have something to point to. I I I'm not making a dire prediction here, but it's best to anticipate this sort of thing because, well, housing is very sensitive and there are many competing interests.
Yeah, well, uh Mr. Bolton, there actually there there were. So prior to this um code being rewritten and alternative housing being put in, when um the the mini housing uh market started to get really hot, um there were a number of people that uh proposed um alternative mini housing communities. They wanted to have them. And of course, they they came up against the State Sanitary Code or or housing regulations, which said absolutely not, mostly because of square footage and things like that. So um that and it seems like the growing popularity probably really prompted them when it came time to rewrite the code um to to put something like this in into it. So I'm sure you can find case law out there where this has been challenged.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um did I uh understand you saying earlier when you're talking about uh alternative housing uh that rentals were discouraged?
Not allowed, as in not allowed.
Not allowed. So if someone puts a tiny home as an alternate NADU in their property, uh they wouldn't be able to rent that?
It's ADUs, I believe, are different. Um that um that ADUs, if allowed, um in your community, uh follow those regulations, which tend to be zoning regulations and then the building code regulations. As far as the Board of Health is concerned, probably most ADUs would meet the housing code, but maybe not.
Well, yeah, accessory dwelling unit would have to meet the the minimum standards of the housing code. Um I think what we don't want is we don't want um, you know, a a tiny home put onto a a property, somebody, you know, they want to go and do tiny home living. Then after a few months of bumping into each other, you know, they decide it's not for them and then to recoup their eighty thousand dollar investment, they're going to also start renting it. That's what we don't want.
And one of the requirements in the code is that it has to be owner occupied for the reasons that Scott just outlined too.
And that's under the category of alternative housing, not just tiny homes, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? Those are great presentations, good good discussion.
Malcolm, before we before we leave this topic, I'm going to ask Sandra to um, you know, we uh we just hired a new housing specialist. So if you want to promote that, Sandra, go right ahead.
I'd love to. That's it. Um is hired on Monday, started Monday. He's our new housing specialist um for Public Health and and he will be um becoming our uh expert on housing in Berkshire County because it's such an important, time-consuming um responsibility of Boards of Health. I mean, very time-consuming. Um so this, welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you very much. Um I I look forward to working with all of you and and getting to know uh more Berkshire County than than I've been uh exposed to um throughout my time here. Um but yeah, I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Ken.
Nice to meet y'all.
Yeah. So um Sandra's last slide gave um uh Catherine and and my um contact information along with uh the main community sanitation program number. So you are welcome to to contact either Catherine or myself directly with any any um questions. Um also, a number of the State Sanitary Code regulations that were listed in Sandra's slide do fall underneath the community sanitation uh program. So if you have questions about uh pools, your your rec camps, um anything like that, you can shoot them to us and and if we don't have answers to them, we'll put you in charge or in touch with the people that do. But I'm getting back to those numbers. Um there is another um DPH uh community sanitation employee, Amy Reardon, that handles a lot of housing calls. Um and we all do um field inspections. So calling us directly, uh you might just get a voicemail because we're in prison for three days and we don't have our phones on us. If you call the main DPH number first, which we prefer, it goes into a database which gets recorded. And then um that call is is put out to the whole uh program. So then someone will pick it up, is more likely to pick it up for you, from you in a timely manner.
And uh the BRPC Public Health Program is always available too. Um we have uh in addition to Dan, we have three other housing and uh uh experienced inspectors in the field. And so basically, um we have a lot of uh collective experience here in addition. So you have lots of resources in Berkshire County.
Great, thank you.
Malcolm, and Tom, can I interject to say that um that this presentation is on our website under the agenda and minutes? I know we're going to review the website later, but um just to say, so you can get to that document.
Right, and I just want to say thanks to Catherine and Scott. And also, uh Scott was one of the founding members, I guess, of the Berkshire Public Health Alliance many, how many years ago is that? Ten, twelve years ago?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, was it eighteen? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great. It's good to see you and your your, well, I guess it's not necessarily new, but your different roles, Scott.
Yeah. Now, instead of being within the boundaries of Adams, I have the entire state.
Well, thank you very much for having us. It was wonderful meeting you all. And please do send your questions to us. We're very happy to help you when we can.
Yes, thanks for this opportunity to um provide you with more information on what Public Health does.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very informative. Um let's go on to the next item on the agenda then. Um is uh voting to endorse committee chairs for uh fiscal year 2024. Um we have uh two uh committees that we have uh chair people nominated for that we would uh like approval for today. Uh Commission Development Committee, Doug McNally, and the Berkshire Brownfield Committee, Sheila Irvin. Um I think we can do this uh with one motion to approve both. Uh unless uh anyone has any objections, so then we can separate them.
Renee, would Sheffield not make a motion to do that as outlined by Malcolm?
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve both uh candidates.
A second.
And Kyle, thank you. Uh so we have a motion and a second. Any uh discussion? Okay, then let's proceed to a vote. Uh Kate, please.
All right, again, from Adams to Windsor, Duval.
Aye.
Trab.
Aye.
Darby. McGurn.
Yes.
Pachano.
Aye.
Yinger.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Oh, Menci.
Yes.
Torrico.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Wood. Oh, I'm sorry, Hoy, sorry's here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Hoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Abstain.
McNally.
I don't know whether I'm supposed to abstain on this or.
Oh, yeah, could call Chris. Casaglio.
Yes.
Thanks, Chris. That's it.
Hey, thank you. Uh the uh that motion passes. Um the next order is to vote to ratify appointment of representatives related groups not under the jurisdiction of the commission. And we have the West Field River Wild and Scenic Advisory Committee. Uh again, Doug McNally uh is uh nominated for the representative on the committee from BRPC. Uh any uh uh motion to to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Kyle.
Second.
Amanda, thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed, who was the second?
Uh Amanda Hamilton.
Thank you.
Okay, uh any uh comments, questions? So let's proceed to a vote.
Duval.
Aye.
Trab. Darby. McGurn.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Caleb, did I miss you? Darby.
I.
And I got McGurn. Pachano.
Aye.
Yinger.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Menci.
Yes.
Torrico.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Hoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Abstain.
Casaglio.
Yes.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you. That uh motion passed. Uh and then the next order is another vote to appoint uh representatives to related groups not under the jurisdiction of the commission. Uh and again, for the uh this is for the Woodlands Partnership of Northwest Massachusetts, uh nominating uh Chris Casalio. Um, Mrs., is that how you pronounce your last name? Would you please correct me if I'm?
Casalio, the G is silent.
Okay, thank you, Casalio. Um and uh so I want to entertain a motion to uh approve Mr. Casalio.
I move.
Thank you, Pedro.
Second.
All right, Bart. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any, uh, comments or discussion?
So just, um, for familiarity sake, this used to go under the name of the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership. And it got, and it got renamed, oh, a little, a little while ago. Kyle had been the BRPC representative for several years. So we really, really appreciate Chris, um, being willing to take on this role.
Very good. Um, any further discussion or questions? If not, let's proceed to a vote.
Duval.
Yes.
Trab.
Yes.
Darby.
Yes.
McGurn.
Yes.
Pachano.
Aye.
Yinger.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Menci.
Yes.
Torrico.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
Hoy. Rasmussen. Oh, thanks. That's okay. Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Abstain.
And McNally.
Abstain.
Okay.
Hey, the motion, uh, pass. Um, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, presentation of the 2020, uh, census results. Our, uh, data and IT manager, Mark Malloy, will provide an overview.
Thanks, Malcolm. Uh, let me just share my screen. All right. So good evening, everyone. Um, I know it is three years after the census occurred, uh, but the Census Bureau, um, just over the last several months have released, uh, the bulk of their data. The, um, so most, yeah, most of the data has now been released. Um, a little bit of background on the census, uh, this year or in 2020. Uh, 63% of the county self, uh, responded, which is pretty much right on par with what we've done previous decades. Uh, that remaining percentage is visited by, uh, census takers and eventually subject to administrative record review to get as comprehensive of, of a picture as we can. The accuracy, um, is similar to the previous sensei as well. Uh, there's undercounts in BIPOC and children, uh, which is very typical. Um, and then there's overcounts in the non-Hispanic, white and Asian populations. Um, specifically for, um, our Berkshire County, um, in 2020, we had 129,026 people, uh, decrease of just over 2,000 people, continuing our decline since, uh, our peak in 1970. Um, we did see a number of communities gain population though, uh, mostly in South County, uh, Beckett, Aggrumont, Monterey, Tearingham, all gained over 100 people, um, in the last decade. Uh, Hancock, New Ashford and Sandersfield gained less than 100, but more than 5% of their population, which is noteworthy. Uh, we also saw plenty of communities that saw decreases in their population. Uh, Adams, Dalton, Hinsdale, Lee, North Adams, Pittsfield, Williamstown, all lost more than 100 people. Pretty much all in Pittsfield in the north. Um, and then we saw some smaller towns, Florida, Sevoy, Washington, Windsor, uh, lost less than 100 people, but more than 5% of their population. Um, these numbers, um, obviously communities may debate them. I know a lot of the town clerks have their own numbers showing different trends. Um, but these are the official numbers that the Census Bureau has. Um, another thing that has been released is the age breakdown. So you can see what our age curve now looks like. Um, you can see the population goes up to around the college age group where we, uh, traditionally import, uh, more students than we send out, then goes down a little bit through the twenties and thirties, early forties. And then it increases quite significantly into the 50 and 60 and 70 year olds where it then declines. So we still have a significant bump in our population, uh, in the baby boom generation, um, which is moving to the right on the screen. Um, you can see the numbers there. Uh, age under 20, we have 20, almost 25,000 people. Uh, 20 to 40 year olds, we have almost 30,000 people. 40 to 65, we're up to 43,000 people. And then it drops down, back down over, um, age 65 down to 31 and a half thousand people. Median age, uh, so we are getting older as a, as a region. Our median age is 47.8 years old. Uh, increase of three, just over three years since 2010. Um, oldest community is Alfred. That's over 61 years old, um, for their median, uh, followed by, by Stockbridge and Richmond at 59, 58. Again, you can kind of see South County is a little bit older on that map, a little bit darker colors. Uh, the youngest communities, Williamstown is 36, largely driven by Williams College. And then you have North Adams and Pittsfield are two meter urban areas at 42 and 44. Uh, moving on, uh, diversity, we've become a lot more diverse over the last decade. Uh, we're up to, uh, 19,703 people or 15% of our population would be classified in the, the BIPOC, uh, Black Indigenous People of Color. Um, that's up from 12, just over 12,000 in 2010, um, when it was only 9.4%. So a significant increase, um, in that BIPOC community. Uh, Pittsfield has the largest number and percentage, uh, almost 10,000, uh, people and 22% in their population. But followed by Williamstown and Great Barrington. Williamstown numbers are again driven by the college. Um, and then we, uh, the least diverse are some of our smaller communities, rural communities, Peru, Otis, Clarksburg, um, just around 5% uh, diversity. Households, we have 57,000 households, uh, an increase of 1,000 households. So we lost population, but we gained households. Um, and so the result of that is a decrease in the people per household. So we have more houses being occupied, uh, more households out there, just fewer people in those households. Again, with the aging population, a lot of the kids have moved out. And so instead of a two or instead of a three or four family household, you may be down to two fam, or two person household. Uh, so yeah, the number of people per household has decreased, um, from 2.34 down to 2.26. Um, highest number per household is Williamstown, 2.98. I would not put any stock into that number. That includes Williams College. Um, and so that's going to throw off those calculations. Um, the smallest households, uh, Matt Washington at two people per household and Lennox at 2.1 people per household. Oops, sorry about that. And you can kind of see in that map, it's kind of scattered around the county, um, no consistent trends as to where we have, uh, more people per household. The household composition, about 40% of our households are married. Another 8% are cohabitating couples. 20% are single males and 30% are single females. With the single male and single female doesn't mean they're living alone. They may have children, they may have, uh, roommates. Um, but one per, it, it's just not a relationship, not a marriage or cohabitating couples. Um, so about 50% of our households are in essence, single adults. Um, households with children, uh, about 50% of, of them are married couples. 13% cohabiting, cohabitating couples. Um, 24% of households with kids, um, are single females. So that's a uh, uh, increase from the last census, uh, some more single family or single parent, um, households. And then 17% of the households, um, have people who are 65 and over who are living alone. So that's again, a, a significant increase, um, over the last decade. Housing units increased, uh, as well, about another thousand, um, a 1.8% increase. Part of the housing units, um, are second homes. Um, and I'll take a step back, are 12,000, 12 and a half thousand are vacant units. And then a subset of vacant units are what we call, uh, second homes. The census called seasonal units. That's at 7,756. That number has actually gone down since 2010. Thing to remember, um, the census happened during COVID-19. A lot of people relocated to their second home for a year or two. And so they were most likely counted at their second home as their residence. It was occupied. It was not a second home. Um, highest percentage of second homes, Hancock at 63%. That's mostly the developments around Jiminy Peak. Um, and then Otis and Beckett are lake community second home areas. Smallest percentages, Adams at just under 1% and then Clarksburg and North Adams at just under 2%. As, uh, I think all of us expect, more of the second homes are high percentage of second homes are south of Pittsfield with a few exceptions in there. And then housing tenure, uh, tenure is another terminology for owning and renting. Uh, so there is 30,000 owners or 66% of our housing units. And then 19,000 renters, uh, 33%. I should say that's 66% of occupied housing units. And then renters, it's 33% of occupied housing units. Um, highest percentages, unsurprisingly, some of our small, uh, hill towns, Peru, Matt Washington and Windsor, 94, 95, 96%. Highest rental percentages, North Adams, almost 50% are, of the housing units are rental. Followed by Pittsfield and Adams, 39 and 41%. And then I'll just, that graph there, um, shows your owners and renters, but I also threw in the second home, uh, units and the other vacant units, just to give you the complete picture of, oops, of, um, what's going on in the county. So that's actually all I have. There was a lot of data there. Um, so happy to discuss any of that, um, with anyone. It's a lot to take in. Uh, that presentation will be available. Kate, I assume it's going to go online.
Yep. It's already there. Under this meeting's materials.
There's surprises. Yeah.
Um, I, I have a question about, um, the cohabitating adults. Does that include roommates? I mean,
So it's cohabitating couples.
Couples. But where do roommates fit in?
Roommates would be single male or single female households.
Okay. So it'd be counted as somebody's a primary householder and then the roommates.
They have a roommate. Yeah.
Mark, do you know how our, our BIPOC, uh, population change compared with, uh, the state, uh?
I do not know that often. I don't know if the state saw, I mean, we had a, um, just pull it up quick. You know, we had over 50% increase, um, in the BIPOC community. So I don't know if the state saw that dramatic of an increase, but maybe they did.
Yeah, but we're going from almost nothing. So.
Yeah.
Yes.
A, a large percentage of a very small population is, is small.
Hey, um, that was, that was great. Any, any other questions, comments? I mean, uh?
I got a question, Malcolm. Uh, Marcus, is there like a summary of, uh, of all the data that BRPC will, will put on the website or be available to?
So I think it was in the, uh, meeting, the, um, agenda packet, uh, there was a four or let's see, maybe a six pager. It's also available on Berkshire Benchmarks. Um, it's a two-page kind of overview. And then there's, I think, four pages of tables where you can see your town and how what the numbers are for all of these data points.
Great. Thank you.
I, I wonder if it makes sense to, can you flip over quickly to Berkshire Benchmarks, Mark, and show people how to really get some of this material?
Uh, just give me a second here.
I know we've talked about it before, but I still think it's a, this is a wonderful resource for, uh, our communities.
So this is Berkshire Benchmarks website. Um, and you can look for indicators, um, which are pre-chosen, uh, data points of interest to the region. Um, you can look at data, which I'll show you in a second. And then you can see at the bottom here, census 2020 summary. And you can just click on that and get the, the summary that, uh, I just talked about. But, uh, within the data, you can, uh, there's a ton of data up there. So you can view all the topics and there is, um, a lot of broad categories that you can dig into and get more detailed data. You can also, uh, look at a community profile. I'm just going to pick one on random. Hopefully this works for me. This community profile pulls just a ton of data from the, uh, the, the library here. And so you can see, oops, Lennox, uh, oops, sorry about that. There we go. Um, there is a ton of data within these community profiles. So if you want to see the latest data for your community, I would start with, uh, going to the data, get your community profile. And then if there's something else you want, dig into the library. Um, so that's my super quick overview of, um, Berkshire Benchmarks. Again, ton of data up there.
I'm sorry. Mary? Anyone else have any, uh, questions? Uh, I, I really like that, uh, that is kind of a segue into our next, uh, our next topic, but, uh, eh, let's not, uh, finish this unless, uh, we have no more questions. Okay. Well, thank you, Mark. That was, uh, very helpful and, uh, informative. Um, let's go on to the next item on the agenda, if I can back to it. Um, the next item is, uh, a review of the BRPC website. Um, you know, we talked about, uh, um, introducing, uh, uh, commission members to what BRPC does because oftentimes we come in and sit in meetings for years before we can absorb, uh, everything that, uh, that the commission is doing. Uh, so, uh, uh, this, uh, meeting, uh, we thought we would have a review of the BRPC website, which uh, will serve two functions, I believe, uh, serve as a, a comprehensive introduction to what BRPC does. And also, uh, uh, help, uh, help you figure out how to navigate the, the website. Um, Tom, do you want to?
I, I can. We didn't really discuss it amongst staff, but actually Laura is the, our website person. I don't know, Laura, do you want to take it away? Can you do that?
Yeah.
I'm, yeah, I'm happy to. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll put you on the spot.
No worries. I saw it about 30 minutes ago on the agenda and thought, oh.
Well, somebody's going to do something.
Um, all right. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen then. And, um, hopefully everybody can see our homepage. This version of our website was launched in late 2020, um, after we had undertaken a a bit of a revision of our, our agency brand and, um, that allowed us to present a new, um, online presence to the community. And I think what I will start with is that, uh, the top navigation menu here um, has some great history and sort of backstory on what BRPC does and the services that we provide. You can access, um, you know, a page about the, our mission and the services, the commission and the various subcommittees. Um, certainly we hope that you will point people our direction when we have open, uh, Um, certainly we hope that you will point people our direction when we have open, uh, job postings. We have added a section recently that, um, is devoted to, uh. Bids and any sort of procurement that we need to do. So that's under solicitations. Agendas and minutes from any of our, from these meetings, as well as other, uh, BRPC committees are all stored here. I'm going to just jump in here. To say that you'll find, um. Uh, agendas and materials posted and then minutes after they are approved for each meeting date in these tables. Um, that was executive committee. Then we go through to full commission, environmental review, finance, regional issues, committee. Commission development, um, and so on and so, so forth.
Um, so. Laura, if you pause on tonight's meeting, people can see that the two presentations are there. Could we show that?
Full commission and September twenty-first, there you go. You have links to the boards of health and new housing code and Mark's, um, twenty-twenty census summary that he just provided. So.
Two places.
If you only want that file, you don't have to download the entire packet, which is really nice. And. We appreciate Kate doing that kind of, um, detailed work to make sure we all have access to that content. Um, information about our and your ethics law compliance and open meeting laws. Um, information about the communities that we serve. Um, one addition that I want to point out, uh, that was just went live today is a page about the, um, annual CUSAC award that we, um. Honor someone or a group with each year. Um, this year you probably have already, um, gotten notice that Alana Steinhauer from Volunteers in Medicine is the. CUSAC Award winner, um, and she will be honored at our annual meeting on October fifth. If you want to read more about Charles CUSAC, um, for whom the, the award is named, there's a link here to some background. And then Kate has also added a list of all previous honorees since this award began in nineteen ninety-six. So. That is, um, a quick overview of the about section. Under programs. All of our different, uh, program areas are here, and I selfishly will pick my own to show you an example, the economic development planning program. If you go to any of these program areas, you can learn more about overarching initiatives that we are managing. Uh, for instance, the Berkshire Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy or SEDS, that's a multi-year ongoing effort. So it's under the initiatives category. And then individual projects that we might work on for a year or two. Um, are under the project, um, heading. We also have some pertinent reports at the bottom, and so whichever. Of BRPC's program areas you want to learn more about, you know, what is their work, uh, what are they focused on, what kinds of. Projects are they handling right now? Um, you can go to these program area sections, and there's also a little button at the bottom to look at a bit of an archive. Of things that we've worked on in the past few years, um, if it's not right here on the. On our program areas landing page. We have an events calendar. That you can of course view from our homepage, but this is a nice way to see more of a comprehensive look a month at a time. So here we are in September. And if you go to the BRPC. BRP Commission Meeting, kind of funny with the acronyms, you can click on this. And again, this is a spot that you'd be able to find agenda and meeting materials as well as the Zoom link. So if, um, you don't have access to your email, but you're trying to find the Zoom link, you can. Um, go right to our website to get into a meeting. Uh, we have a resource area that I want to also point out, lots of, um, links to, um, planning related. Resources and other organizations, partners in other regions, all of the RPAs throughout Massachusetts. And then some resources that are broken down by, um, discipline, transportation and environment, economic development, et cetera. And some links to local media as well. Um. We have something that I don't think we've really spotlighted for this group yet, but this is something we've been compiling over the last year, and that's a planning toolkit. This could come in very, uh, useful for many of you who are looking for, um, a quick. Summary of a particular topic. If there's something that your community is interested in, in learning more about, the pros and cons, considerations, how to. Enact a particular, um, tool or mechanism within planning. You can go to this page and we currently have about forty different topics. Um, that our staff has, have researched. And developed two-page summaries, uh, on these topics. And we are getting to the point where we have enough that I actually have to rearrange these into some more categories to make it. Uh, manageable. We have a lot of housing-related, um, information. As well as economic development and some other items that, um, we definitely urge you to just peruse this and see what. Um, might be helpful to you or to your colleagues in your own town. Uh, we do of course have a news area. There's a digest of our, um, monthly e-newsletter called Common Ground. And so you could click here to subscribe if you're not already, but I think Kate's taking care of that for you. And, um, we also have links to articles that our staff have written. Um, lengthier, lengthier pieces than what we put in the e-newsletter. Um, and then instances where we have been featured in local media. Um, the most recent one that we've posted is a story about. Something that Mark and I are working on, which is a, a new outdoor recreation-focused website for the county that is going to launch later this year. Um, and then of course, the contacts page. Every staff member. Um, and our full email address, so that you don't have to use an online form to reach out to, uh, one of us and, um, hope that it reaches the right person. So you can get our phone numbers and extensions and email addresses right there on the contact page. Um. I'll go back to the homepage and just show you a couple more things. Um. One is that we post important news and announcements here right on the homepage. The rest of them can be viewed. Um, as a whole digest, but the most recent ones, um, are. Posted right on the homepage. Um, often these are calls for public comment. Um, or requests for, uh, information or responses to, uh, RFPs. And then the upcoming handful of, um, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission or events. Are presented in this list over on the left-hand side. So. Again, if you want to take a quick glance at what meetings you need to put on your own calendar, those are always right here, um. And we are featuring right now, something that's coming up. Hopefully we'll see many of you there. The October tenth, um, statewide municipal partnerships conference. Click on that to give you a little bit more information. This will be where everything slows down, of course.
And I think we have to put a plug in for the annual meeting if people haven't signed up. They can still do it up till tomorrow, is that right?
I think we're going to be able to take, um, reservations for the annual meeting into early next week because, um. Yeah, our, in terms of the numbers we have to give to the venue are okay until next Thursday. So if you haven't bought your ticket for annual meeting. On October fifth at Berkshire Hills Country Club. Please do that, um, soon. And of course, the website is the quickest and easiest way to do that. So. Um, and again, a few days later, the October tenth, um, event with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll is something I think many of you would be interested in attending. And we have a couple of people from staff who are presenting at that. No, that's the mark, I'm sorry. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, yes, that's the one we're, yes. It feels like there are a lot of conferences in October. Um, any questions? Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you, Laura. I think that was, uh, helpful to me. Thanks.
Sure. I will stop sharing.
Yeah. Well, I was very good, uh, uh, on this, on the spot. Thank you. Um. The next, uh, order of business is the executive director's report. Uh, before we do that, let me just put another plug for the annual meeting. I mean. Not just everybody here, but go back to your planning boards and your select boards, because, uh. Uh, this is, uh, this will be a good, uh, a good meeting and a, uh. Uh, something that's hard to find these days, which is an inexpensive dinner, so. Tom, uh, executive directors report.
Yeah, since we had, uh, not that long ago, an executive committee, a lot of the items were covered in that, uh, report. Uh, again, I'm going to highlight this municipal partnership conference that Laura mentioned, um. And also, you know, very soon there is going to be a housing bond bill at the state. So I think if you have, you know, if anyone has some priorities about housing, they should bring them forward to. Um, you know, I, I think probably the best place to bring them forward to now would be. For the smaller communities would be through Ann Goby, the Director of Rural, uh, Affairs. Uh, but I, I have to say that, um, you know, that has to happen pretty quickly. The other item that's not in the report that I would like to mention is. Along with a, uh, housing bond bill. There is likely to be what's referred to as a municipal modernization bill coming out. And, uh, a few years ago, you know, five years ago, maybe. There was a, a, a similar type bill that looked like, that looked to clean up a lot of the. Inefficiencies that municipalities may be facing. Um, and so I, I think the, the, the previous bill, for instance, had a easier way to do procurement. And kind of breaking down some of the different categories. And I, I would encourage anyone, if they have some ideas about. What really annoys them about something they have to do with municipal government. That doesn't seem to be necessary to ship those ideas to me and I'll make sure they get. Uh, to forward to the administration. You know, one of the comments that I've heard, and I think we may have even discussed it here, is that. Is it really necessary for, uh, towns with very small projects to, to pay prevailing wage? And maybe that could be something that could be looked at differently. Uh, but tho- those types of ideas, if anyone has some, um, you can find my email address in the contacts. That's all I had, uh, nothing.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, that concludes our agenda for today. Um. I would entertain a motion for a German.
Come on.
Oh, good. Uh, I thought everybody wants to stay all night. All right, well, thank you. Uh, second. Mark, can you second? Thank you, Pedro. Mark, um, Kate?
Um. Sorry, Duval?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Darby? McGurn?
Yes.
Pachano?
Hi.
Yinger?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Menci?
Yes.
Torrico?
Hi.
Hanlon?
Yipper?
Ya- Anthony?
Yes.
Koi?
Yes.
Ross Musson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Hi.
McNally?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.